This meeting to order, May 2nd, 6:00 PM, Oconee County Council. We will begin, per usual, with our public comment session. Mr. Mike Smith, regarding signage.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Mike Smith. My reason coming before you tonight is to ask about the signage that is planned for the Casto complex, the Lake Hartwell Village. I understand that nothing definitive has been decided on the signage for this complex at this time. If this is true, it seems like this would be a good time to initiate and finalize the signage design for this complex before development progresses too far. I'm bringing this matter before you because of the recent letter that was sent by the council to the planning commission that dealt with corridors and several other related topics. One paragraph of that letter dealt with signage, and one of the corridors mentioned was 123. "The Lake Hartwell Village fits directly into your corridor concern, is still in the development stage, and right at the gateway from Clemson to Oconee County." First slide, please. "The timing seems right to show your resolve about signage on this road if discussions were open with Castro at this time about this topic. If you feel this is a valid request that the council can support, I suggest that the council ask Mr. Mulder to coordinate this effort with the appropriate parties for a definitive answer. Lastly, I would last that an update to the council be provided in a convenient manner on this topic." To talk directly about signs, they can either complement a business or shopping area, or have the opposite effect and become a distraction. Let me show you a few pictures of signage. Next sign, please. "This is an excellent welcome to the county. I hope the majority of Oconee County citizens appreciate this. I also hope the person that was responsible for this has been recognized positively." Next slide. "Hopefully, this type of sign will not be considered for Hartwell Village." Next slide. "This seems like a better direction to go, to continue this theme of monument signs with a low profile." Last slide, please. "This is an excellent example of monument signage for an intro into a shopping complex such as Hartwell Village. This is the total signage for this shopping center. Note the lettering on the bank building, thereby eliminating the need for an extra-large entrance sign. All of the businesses lettering on their building to advertise rather than depend on a sign at the entrance. Frankly, there has been a behavior change in how we shop, and it may have carried over to how we use signages on a business rather than depend on a roadside sign. I thank you for your time, and I hope you give active consideration to this request. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Janet Hartman, regarding the Great Oconee Cleanup.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of council. Saturday, April 22nd, the first annual Great Oconee Cleanup was held. Over 200 volunteers gathered at New Spring Church and proceeded to pick up 2,300 pounds of litter along the five-mile stretch of Highway 123 from Clemson to Seneca. This event was very well organized and very well managed. I would like to take a few moments to publicly thank a couple of individuals and groups, departments of Oconee County, for their efforts in this cleanup. First, Sheriff Mike Crenshaw, Corporal Brandon Meadows, Lieutenant Thomas Crompton, and the entire Sheriff's Department for their leadership and coordination. They coordinated with DOT and others to ensure that all volunteers were safe and protected during this event. As I stated, we had 200 volunteers on a very busy stretch of 123, and we had no incidents. That's something to be commended. Next, Swain Steele, Maureen Whitman, and the group at our Oconee County Solid Waste for their commitment to this event. They were out early in the morning with trash receptacles for the staging area. They had recycling containers for all of the bottled water that was consumed by our volunteers, and they stayed till the end to pick up the 2,300 pounds of litter, and that's how we know how much we had, because they weighed it for us. So, kudos to them for their time and effort on that Saturday morning. Additional partners in this event were the school district of Oconee County. They provided the buses and bus drivers. We couldn't have done it without them to transport the volunteers to and from the litter pickup points. They did so in a safe and efficient manner, with, of course, assistance from the sheriff and department safety folks. Keep Oconee Beautiful Association, who they coordinated with Palmetto Pride. They were the ones who came up with the gloves, vests, bags, and grabbers for the volunteers to use. And going forward, this group will continue to promote their efforts with the Adopt a Highway and the Adopt a Spot programs for continued litter pickup. A special thanks go to the Oconee County businesses that supported this effort. New Spring Church, who allowed us to use their parking lot for the staging of this event. Action Services donated portables for bathroom use. Blue Ridge Electric and Bounty Land Enterprises donated bottled water for all of the volunteers. And Duke Energy actually held a cleanup event of their own the day prior because they couldn't join us on the morning of the cleanup. Lastly, I'd like to recognize two council members, Mr. Kane and Mr. Davis, who were seen out on the roadways picking up litter, along with Senator Alexander, so we appreciate their efforts. They were great spokespeople, and it was just great to have the support. We recognize not everyone could be there that morning, and hope to have additional events. The Great Oconee Cleanup was a huge success because a number of organizations and community partners came together, and what it shows is what can be done when numerous folks get together for a common cause. We can do great things with few hands, and many hands make great work. It is my hope that these efforts continue, and this is just our first annual cleanup, and not only that is an annual event, but it is something that is ongoing. Lots of great things can happen with education, awareness, and action by many people in this community. I look forward to being part of the events, and thank you for your support. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Bob Medlin, Stillwater HOA.
Thank you, council, for just a few minutes of your time tonight. Here tonight to express a concern about a planned project off of Highway 123 at the Harps Cove student housing area. I represent the Stillwater Homeowners Association, and I am president of that homeowners association. We have about 190 homes in our community, and we're concerned about the existing entrance and egress area there off of 123 in the Harps Cove. If you've ever been down that area, when it's a train comes by and students are trying to get in and out of there, it's a mess. Traffic actually backs out on the 123 occasionally, and then on top of all of that, you've got kids that are occasionally seen running through the cross thing to get out on the 123. So, we don't know a lot about this project at this point in time, but what we do know is probably going to more than double the size of the existing Harps Cove. I understand there'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of 313 new units there. That's a pretty hefty increase in that area. Plan for completion is 2018. They had the kids in there in 2018. And the concern that we have is not only with the traffic, but the fact that the entrance area going in there, if a train stopped for whatever reason, and the kids were back there and they needed to get out, or you needed to get in with some rescue equipment or fire equipment, it would be completely impossible. So, our desire is to make sure that you guys are aware of this, that it's going to get addressed somehow, some way. We certainly understand Clemson University is growing. We understand the community is growing. We're not here to stop projects and stop progress, but we want to make sure it's done right. We've heard about a tunnel being discussed to go underneath the railroad down at the stoplight of 123, and I think that's 93 that was often goes over to Clemson by the Y area there, which would be, in my mind, a success path to getting kids in and out of that area much better than what they have right now. If that tunnel could be placed underneath the railroad there, and you can get all the cooperation from DOT and the railroad and that kind of thing. So, just a desire to make sure you guys are aware of that, that you're aware that we, as a homeowners association, are concerned with where this is going, and just to make sure that it gets addressed somehow, some way in a positive manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry Barnett.
I need to be as quick to praise as I am to criticize. Good work on the billing codes. Let's see, more work done in the future. That's been a problem for a long time. That goes back to, a few weeks ago, I talked just a little bit about the megalomania, the lust for power, lust for name recognition, and also add a little something to that, the cronyism. You know, there's no way to do away with all that, but you have to address it from time to time. It's human nature. What is the old saying? Power corrupts, absolute power corrupts absolutely. Thomas Jefferson, we'll get back to what I'm really wanting to talk about, and that's a control-free, permanent, control-free zone. Long time in coming. The owners of the landmass, the agricultural and forestry people, the poultry people, when the poultry industry goes, the cattle industry will follow it. So, if you want to protect the rural community, you better keep your hands off. This control-free, permanent control-free is a step in the right direction. You have to recognize the owners of the landmass. And when you rob our land of its monetary value, what incentive do the people have to keep it and protect it? There are entirely too many for-sale signs up and down the road, and a lot of those for-sale signs are put there by families that are afraid of top-down zoning, that at some point the county is going to seize control of the land, they've lost control of their destiny. So, keep on working on that, please, and recognize, these people that want to control land, they need to buy land. If you don't own it, you don't need to control it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ben Turetsky, Fall Creek Access.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It being the beginning of May, right around the corner will be Memorial Day, and once again, we will have some number of our Sheriff's Department deputies up at the entrance to Fall Creek. I recognize that Duke Energy is paying part of the cost, but nevertheless, there's a certain danger involved in having a couple of cars and maybe three or four people almost out of the county, as far as being able to respond properly to other things that might be happening. We're fortunate, I believe, and we should be thankful that there were no deaths at Fall Creek last year. But the very idea, and I went up there just about every weekend, starting from Memorial Day until Labor Day last year, and the police did an excellent job. I saw them taking care of a car full of people who already had started to drink and had alcohol in the car. Other cars turn around. But, you know, for those people who come with their families and want to be able to spend a day putting a boat in, the idea of having, like at Devil's Fork, a park ranger saying, "Well, you know, it's full. You can go to whatchamacallit or wherever," it's different when you have police officers there checking cars, and people begin to wonder just what goes on here. Well, I think we know some of the things that go on. Come to the, you know, push comes to shove, I think that the council still has to think about, very, very strongly, signing a lease with Duke. It does entail having to start development of it within a year or two years or whatever, and finally bringing the Wild West out of Oconee County. The south part of it is very well behaved, except for a little bit of graffiti. The north part of it is the Wild West. I actually came upon a drug bust about six or seven years ago, and I held it out pretty quickly. It's not where I want it to be. So, you know, I implore you to continue to, not just think about it, but when we start budgeting, maybe putting away some money every year. I think that the Parks and Recreation Department, under Phil Shirley, have shown that when you have a place like South Cove, it can be fantastic, and it can make the headlines as being one of the excellent places. And I'm sure that the same thing will likely happen to High Falls. Well, adding the third one could really do two things. One, give us more opportunities for our people to be able to have that kind of an atmosphere, and number two, get rid of, once and for all, the kinds of things that go on up there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am Tom Markovich, for those of you who may not know it. What I'd like to talk to you, I'm very excited that you're finally going to do something with our appeals board for the billing codes. I am very much in favor of this. However, I do have one suggestion. I have already spoke to Mr. Root about this. Concerning the membership of your board, needs to be thought through in the sense that, right now, the current language says "for licensed contractors." Right now, that language would only allow general contractors to participate. In South Carolina, licensed home builders is a separate licensing act, and so we have different practices. It's actually two separate building codes. And in fact, in the residential building code, the codes administrator would be required to be an ex officio, non-voting member of any of those cases when you hear on residential issues. I think you can have one appeals board, that's fine, but it needs to have the membership made up of both classes of licensure, and I think they can do it within their rules if they decide they don't want to have the billing code official be a, the ex officio member when it's the IBC, the International Builders Code. They could do that through the rules, and then when they need him to be there for the international residential code, they could do that, and that could be a simple rules thing. So, that's all I've got on that. My second topic is control-free zoning. I think this is a positive step in the right direction. I'd like to see it go further, because as I've mentioned before, I think this county has a very big issue when it comes to the whole process of initial zoning. I've heard it mentioned in here that people freely, they choose to be zoned. That is not always the case. If you have less than 200 acres, you cannot initiate a rezoning. You have to wait for your neighbors to rezone you. So, I'd like to see us go a step further and just establish a general rezoning process that eliminates this idea of initial rezoning entirely. I think it has issues when it comes to equal protection, and I think it's time to fix it.
Any council member comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'll kind of address a few things in there, and this kind of goes with Mr. Smith on the Casto complex signage, as well as the traffic patterns that we have Mr. Medlin brought up about the Harps Cove area. It's definitely, I've seen a lot of concern on council on how do we address the traffic issues that we have in here, as well as the signage issue to make sure that we don't create a big issue down into there, and it continues to be a safe area of travel. So, just want to let you know that, you know, we are very aware of both of those situations in there, appreciate you both speaking to those. And again, want to give props to the Great Oconee Cleanup and how that went. Really appreciate that, and all the members of the community that were unable to come. A lot of them had their own little cleanups in their neighborhoods and stuff like that, so it was kind of good. So, there's no telling exactly how much trash was picked up in there. I just want to appreciate the cooperation that took place on that day and everything that went through with the amount of trash and the bags of trash that I saw carried was unbelievable. And I think we'll really see, when that area gets mowed, how good a job that was, and I just wanted to say thank you to the county members for doing that.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mulder, would you please explain to Mr. Bob Medlin regarding the fire arrangement for that project entry?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. That was also a concern of county councils and staff as we moved forward in our discussions with project entry. One of the concerns we had was that, very concerned, the impediment that the train could possibly cause for ingress and egress into and out of that property, not only for project entry, but Harps Cove, as well as any commercial development. So, one of the things that we had stipulated as part of our agreement to work with project entry was a secondary emergency access. There's an old logging road that was used for that property by Clemson that actually comes out on Old Clemson Highway. Old Clemson Highway, obviously, there's a trestle over the highways, so there's, you know, ample capabilities to maneuver the emergency services vehicles through there. But one of the requirements was that the developers secure through Clemson our ability to utilize that particular road with some upgrades, obviously with a gate that is a Yelp originated gate. Basically, what that means is the fire department come up, hit the Yelp signal on their sirens, and it will open the gate so that they can get through. So, we wanted to make sure that for the safety of the students, if there was a fire or a medical emergency, we could amply access the property through the secondary entrance in the event there was a train that was blocking the way. So, that is certainly a concern, one that we will continue to monitor and make sure that we get addressed. Again, the developer is fully aware in an agreement that that needs to be done in order for us to work with them. So, I hope that was substantial. If not, just let me know.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments? Thank you. Mr. Root.
Thank you. I would thank you for the state that you made. Really grateful that you're going to stay on this earth, to exist, to move about and do business, and to do your business with wisdom and kindness. I think eating tonight, that would do the effect. All involved with wisdom, clarity, and listening to answer. Action. There's one here. We appreciate begging, asking a lot of truth.
Mr. Kane.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your beloved for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue with our regular agenda, I was asked by Sheriff Crenshaw if we would move the proclamation up a ways so that the deputies can get back to work. So, having said that, do I hear a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion to amend the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a proclamation today for Peace Officers Memorial Day, Proclamation P. 2017-04. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agencies of Oconee County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizen of our community, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement officers, and that law enforcement officers recognize their duty to serve the people of this community by protecting them against violence and disorder, and whereas the law enforcement officers of Oconee County unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore be it resolved that the county council of Oconee County directs that all flags on county buildings be flown at half-staff on May 15th, 2017, in recognition of Peace Officers Memorial Day, and in memory of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty, to offer appreciation to the retired officers for their service to the law enforcement profession, and to honor those law enforcement officers presently serving the community. I would like now the law enforcement officers that are here with us to, please come forward. I would like to present this proclamation to Sheriff Mike Crenshaw and all his staff, those who are here and those who are not, and those who couldn't be here because they paid the ultimate price for helping us every day. We thank you for your service, each and every one of you. We really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
We have our minutes from April 18th to approve.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Any discussion, any changes, additions, deletions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by the Executive Director of the Appalachian Council of Governments, Mr. Steve Pelisser. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Ms. Kamik, and members of county council. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening to give an annual report on return on investment and services of the Appalachian Council of Governments to Oconee County. And do want to apologize for not being able to make it when I was scheduled earlier this year. Had the flu and figured you probably really didn't want to see me at that time anyhow, but appreciate you rescheduling me for this evening. And also, I want to thank Ms. Kamik for your service to the Council of Governments Board of Directors as well. I know you have a day job and your responsibilities here in the county, and so I do appreciate you taking on that additional responsibility on our behalf. Other Appalachian Council of Governments board members from Oconee County include Senator Alexander, our most senior member, Westminster Council Member Bill Brockington, I'm sorry, Regional Member E. Riley, Citizen Appointee citizen, I'm sorry, Regional Member E. Riley, Citizen Appointee Bob Winchester, and Minority Appointee Benny Cunningham. Appreciate the excellent working relationship we've had with county councils since 1965, as well as with your staff and the numerous projects we've done or been able to help you with over the years. As I came in this evening, I distributed a copy of our 2016 annual report and stuffed right in the front of it a summary for Oconee County. You know, I think one, excuse me, excuse me, one measure of effectiveness is return on investment. And for Oconee County, in 2016, your investment in the council of governments was $31,632. The return on that investment going back to the county, its municipalities, and other service entities in the counties was a little over 1.1 million, so that represents a return on investment of $35 back to the county for every dollar you invest. We were pleased that we were able to work with the town of West Union on their Schroeder Street, Burnes Mill Road water project to get, obtain a $279,000 federal grant to support that. And while that was the only grant project last year, over the last five years, we've worked with the county and entities in the county to obtain 1.8 million in federal grant funds to support economic and community development, develop infrastructure, and address other significant community challenges. Also, in 2016, we provided $434,000 through our partners at Worklink for job skills training, which these days, economic developers tell us, the biggest challenge they have in recruiting industry is assuring the skilled workers. This helps that. This also helps those folks in your county who might need to upgrade their skills a little bit to be competitive in today's workforce, workers who might be displaced through plant closings or layoffs, et cetera, resources for incumbent workers, and training for out-of-school youth. Provide a little over $335,000 for services to the aging, including around 36,000 meals, both through group dining site and home-delivered meals, as well as transportation, medical services, home healthcare, and home care. And we're able to work with the DSN board to purchase a van to help with its clients. In addition to the financial return, we also provide many other services to Oconee County and its citizens. You have a full agenda. I won't read the whole report to you, but we'll ask that you do so at your convenience and maybe just give you a few highlights. As I mentioned, we were, only had the one grant last year with West Union, but continued to work with local governments in administering several grants received in the last few years, finishing up on the Golden Corners Pump Station, getting that closed out, Wahala Cheka Peep Mill Water Project, Wahala Downtown Improvement, Streetscape, Westminster Northern Loop Waterline, Westminster Hampson Street Sewer, Westminster Electrical Transformer Upgrade in West Union, the Old School Site Redevelopment Project. Finished up an initiative last year, working with several folks in the county on the entrepreneur-friendly pilot project, making sure that Oconee County is in good shape for entrepreneurs, people who want to develop business, and that you have an easy process for that. Continued with our training programs, board and commissions, the state required planning commission training, as well as staff training, introduction to management and leadership and customer service. Also, no road projects last year, but since 1998, we've been able to put $29 million into roads in Oconee County. And you'll notice the chart at the bottom of page three, you know, the last few years funding through the council of governments to Oconee County is about a fourth of what it was for the few years before that, and that is the road program. The two years you see at the top, we were doing the construction on the Sheep Farm Road Project and the Sheep Farm Road Extension effort. The last couple of years, as we kind of, we've been focusing on other parts of the county, but beginning this year, over the next six months, we'll be putting together our next six-year plan. And Ms. Kamik actually sits on our Transportation Committee, which identifies those priorities. So that's actually a committee that a lot of folks really want to get on, and so I'm sure she will be paying real close attention to your needs, and we look forward to programming new projects into, you know, into that program as well. Thank you for the opportunity going to be with you this evening. Appreciate your support. Look forward to continuing to work with you and your staff, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to respond to those.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments?
Yeah, again, thank you for being here, and thank you for what ACOG does. I do appreciate Madam Chair Kamik serving on that, for that, and appreciate making Oconee better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pelisser, appreciate what you do, and maybe, maybe we could get some corridor planning funds from that Transportation Committee.
That is, that is, that is an eligible activity.
Uh huh.
If, if, if that's what, if that's what the chair submits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Mulder?
Yes, ma'am. I was just wondering if we can't go ahead and get the money up front so we can go ahead and get started?
Right now?
Yeah, we can, you know, submit the request later, but...
I did have $7.83 with me, which I...
That'll at least buy the paper, hopefully. I thank you for the opportunity to be here with you tonight, Ms. Kamik and council, but I'll provide you your brief summary of your agenda items this evening, number of second readings this evening, first of which is 17-05. This is a reference to Project Entry, which we've discussed for quite some time. This will be the second reading of the authorization to execute the Fee and Lieu of Tax Agreement in addition to the Special Source Revenue Credit and the Multi-County Industrial Park Designation. Obviously, I gave a little bit of description earlier of her, some of the things that we have heard some public comment on, but again, this would be, be the second reading of the documents that would issue those incentives in addition to some of the other items that we discussed with them that would need to be incorporated into the design of the facility. 2017-08, this is a expansion of an existing industry in the county. As you can see, stated on the agenda, it is Itron. They were grateful for their continued investment, obviously, in our county. They're looking at doing some continued investment, and this particular ordinance would approve the second reading of their Fee and Lieu of Tax Agreement. Third, second reading is 2016-20. This is an ordinance that would amend our Article II, Chapter 12, in other terms, the noise ordinance. This is an item that has been worked on for quite some time between your county attorney, Mr. David Root, in addition to our sheriff, as well as some consultants that we have working on it. And I believe over the number of months it was worked on and in the eyes we're looking at it, I believe we've got it in a final form for your consideration, and hopefully you've had a time to, an opportunity to review those. But this particular ordinance would approve that amendment to the noise ordinance in accordance with the recommendations from those parties. Three, five, first readings of ordinances this evening, first is 2017-10. This particular ordinance went through the committee level first, Public Safety Committee. This would actually amend Chapter 6, Article 3 of our Code of Ordinances, specifically as it relates to the makeup of our Building Code Appeals Board. As discussed at the committee level, the Building Codes Department is requesting and recommending that we modify the qualifications, if you will, of individuals being appointed to that board. To give you an example, if you were to appoint somebody like myself to the board as your representative, and it's the job of that board to basically make a decision on whether the code has been interpreted properly or not. So if there's a question between a builder and electrician, licensed electrician, and our Building Codes Department had made an interpretation or decision that the electrician felt was inappropriate in accordance with the spirit of the code, the International Electrical Code, he could file an appeal to this particular body to appeal the decision of our staff. He would then obviously present to this board of individuals. The staff would also present their particular position and why they made the decision the way they did, and the board would then determine whether or not the code was applied correctly and then approve the appeal and allow the electrician to continue as they so choose based on that particular item. Based on that decision, if I'm sitting on that board, I know nothing about the electrical code. I know nothing about electricity. Therefore, I couldn't properly vote or properly make a recommendation in accordance with what's correct in accordance with the code. So what we are asking is for us to put some qualification requirements on individuals to serve, and you heard Mr. Markovich discuss the general contractor versus residential makeup on that. What we were asking for is for those people who are appointed to have some knowledge of construction, knowledge of electrical code, knowledge of framing, knowledge of carpentry, knowledge of just general contractor, basic knowledge, so that way when they're hearing arguments and they're interpreting the code themselves, they have some background to do so correctly. So this particular ordinance would reestablish qualification guidelines for who can serve on that board and who can actually be eligible to serve. So that's what that particular ordinance is. I believe it came out of Public Safety as part of the presentation at the last meeting, therefore was directed to be put on the agenda for your consideration. 2017-11, this particular ordinance would meet Chapter 38 of our zoning ordinance. This particular ordinance came from a direction of council at the last meeting to be placed on this particular agenda. Based on our current zoning ordinance, if you rezone yourself to a ag residential, any of the districts, and you now choose to go back and rezone yourself to a lesser district, the current Code of Ordinances would not allow you to zone yourself back to a, excuse me, a control-free district. You could go as far back to just above that particular district. Based on conversation from council at the last meeting, it was directed that we actually drafted up an amendment that would permit a property owner to rezone back to a control-free district if they so choose to, in which they're currently limited from. So that particular ordinance would remove certain language, as you see in your documents, and allow a property owner to zone and then be rezoned back to control-free. Ordinance 2017-12, this is an ordinance that would authorize staff to execute a ground lease agreement with the Foothills Agricultural Center, Foothills Agricultural Resources and Marketing Center. This is the property on Highway 123 that was purchased for the future Heritage Market, Heritage Farm Center, and this particular ordinance would allow the execution of the lease in the form as attached with the ag folks in order to go ahead and nail that property down and allow them to start preparing to develop it. So we have finally gotten to a point where I think there's an agreed-upon language within the lease between parties. No, never mind.
Pretty close.
We are close, and that's what we have for executive session tonight. All right, so we're close. First and final reading of resolutions, 2017-05. This is coming out of a recommendation from our emergency services and public safety departments. This would allow us to sign the statewide mutual aid agreement. This basically would allow county resources to participate in, in other state emergencies across the county, as well as allow them to come and assist us during our times of emergency so that resources can be shared. They've come up with a new form of that. It's a standard form to be used across the entire state, and that's why we're coming back and asking for approval to sign that new form based on the new regulations and provisions. No action items this evening. Building Codes Appeal Board opening for Districts 4 and 1. Obviously, I would recommend that depending on how you go forward with the ordinance, to amend that makeup of that board, to, you know, consider delaying those until you determine whether or not you're going to approve that ordinance, 2017-10. No unfinished or new business, no council committee reports, and as stated just a moment ago, we still need the executive session to discuss the lease with the Foothills Agricultural Resources and Marketing Center group. That is your agenda for this evening. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like, can we amend the agenda to move ordinance 2017-12 till after executive session? Would that be permissible? Since the executive session is in regards to ordinance 2017, I'd like to amend the agenda for that to follow executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have no public hearings today, no third readings today, so let's proceed with second reading of ordinance 2017-05, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a Fee and Lieu of Tax Agreement between Oconee County, South Carolina, and Project Entry, et cetera.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Ordinance 2017-08, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a Fee and Lieu of Tax Agreement between Oconee County, South Carolina, and Itron, et cetera.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
2016-20, an ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 12 of the Oconee County Code of Ordinances regarding noise regulation within the unincorporated areas of the county and other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, I would like to discuss this. When I read through the ordinance, the first thing that jumped out and slapped me in the face were the fact that there's no fines or penalties or anything like that. Not that I saw, anyway.
It's on the very last page. Penalties are consistent with Section 1.7.
But what does that mean?
It's the general county, any violation of a county ordinance, it goes to the magistrate's court, so the full powers of the magistrate to fine, rest, you know, a judge, somebody, or enforce restitution requirement, all that's open. So it's just the full magistrate powers to enforce. So it just references Section 1.7.
So it's anybody's guess what the penalty might be? If there's several violations, or how does this work?
Sure, what we can do, we have a lot of ordinances that read this way. I can just, for the, if you want to amend it, I can just move over Section 1.7 into this, so it's stated in full here, so no one has to look over to Chapter 1.
You're looking at having like a first, second, third, is kind of what you were thinking, like a...
Yeah, something more concrete than, well, you know, if you go up before the magistrate, you might get your wrist slapped, you might get a fine.
You might have to pick up trash.
You might have to pick up trash, yeah.
That might be something to have someone from the sheriff's office speak to. This is the way we drafted it, and the sheriff's office signed off on it, and law enforcement signed off on it. I'll write it however y'all want. I just don't want to speak about what would be the best way to do graduated fines or penalties because that would be outside of my jurisdiction venue, what have you.
So the sheriff's office could make a recommendation to the magistrate? Is that what I'm kind of understanding?
Well, I think, as I understand Ms. Kamik's request, is that we have outlined kind of a first offense, second offense, and have it spelled out very specifically what those might be. So as opposed to, all within the magistrate's jurisdiction, as opposed to just having a general reference to Section 1.7, we have that delineated. So for that, my preference would be that I get with either Chief Davis and/or Sheriff Crenshaw and get their recommendations for what that would be, because that's not a matter we addressed, we just went with this general reference, and then I bring that back. We want to do it that way for a second.
And I wonder if the reasoning behind that would be because if, let's just say you're going to hold an outdoor concert and your fine's 2,500, well, you're just going to go ahead and suck it up and take that 25...
I mean, the fine max, the magistrate's court's 500.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
It's 500, so magistrate court does not have unlimited jurisdiction.
Okay. So we do have a max fine of 500?
500 per incident, it could be per day.
Obviously, I don't spend a lot of time with a magistrate, so I don't know these fines, so...
Section 1.7 does reference the, the maximum allowed by law penalty for a county code ordinance, and that's $500.
Okay.
But that could be per incident, per day, but it is a maximum of $500. And that's where the judge's authority comes into play to determine the severity of it, and that's dependent upon the discussions with the sheriff. It's part of their prosecution of the case. The magistrate determines what level and what graduated scale he's going to use within that $500 in order to assess the fine. We don't have that authority, even if we put it in there, do we?
We could do something where we, you have a graduated offense, so you kind of limit, say, county's ordinance is, for the first offense, is 200. It could go, so you're kind of reducing the magistrate's ultimate jurisdiction, you can't increase it. So you can outline it that way, but as Mr. Mulder said, it's, the way it's written now gives the magistrate the discretion from 0 to 500, and, you know, obviously has some imprisonment, jail time penalties as well. has some imprisonment, jail time penalties as well.
Do we have a permit for, you know, it seems like the outdoor concerts is getting a little bit more popular, which, you know, is a good thing. I see it through the cities and some of the unincorporated areas out where I am. Is there a permit process for concerts that are being held and what the rules and guidelines for those would be, and what type of police or security that measures that should be in place for those areas?
What made it through the committee was twelve thirty-seven, special permits, and it's an administrative, you're essentially moving that over to the county administrator to issue special permits with any kind of requirements that he deems necessary depending on the event.
Yeah.
Could foreshadow, you know, guess what all types of events and conditions might be necessary.
Right.
They pay the fee, they apply, and then they get a permit.
I just wanted to bring that up to knowledge to the general public that that is in there, that if you're going to have an event like that, please contact us. It makes things a lot simpler if we know of on the front of it rather than in the backside of it, so.
What about regular events? I'm thinking back to how all this started. You remember the amphitheater folks? I mean, they would have had regular events. How does the permitting process apply to something like that?
It doesn't say temporary in here, and I guess first we have to have a finding that it's going to violate the general prohibition, so we're going to have a consistent violation of the, say, the seventy or the sixty decibels, weighted average per hour, what have you. So if that is the case, and that's on a consistent basis, that could be permitted because it would be under a special permit, but it's, these aren't temporary. They don't have to be event-specific or temporary permits.
So if you were going to have something on a regular basis, you just need one permit that allows you to have your event regularly scheduled?
I believe that's the way they would cover that situation.
As long as it was in, from what I read, let's just say like a church is having, has outdoor concerts, and it's within the parameters of the same type of venue, I believe that is fine, but if you're a piece of land and you're having five or six different events on this land, I think it would fall under the need of where that's not every Sunday or first Sunday of every month or first Wednesday of every month.
Yeah, I basically would look at the particular situation. For example, if somebody wanted to come in and install an amphitheater facility and have concerts over the summer every weekend, I certainly would, you know, issue a permit for that under certain special considerations regarding, you know, any complaints we get, decimal levels. I mean, we got to look at those things, and, you know, what's the neighboring property conditions, you know, what is the density of the population in the area? So we'd look at those. So I think that what Ms. Reed's saying is I could actually issue a special permit to an amphitheater facility to operate on a long-term basis, given they don't violate particular provisions, and it becomes a problem if they're having to get five days a week, you know, if it's a, you know, Saturday and Sunday only event, those all would come into play. I'm more than likely, if we had an amphitheater or something like that that's going to be an ongoing permanent thing, I'll probably take it to a committee of some kind, a public safety committee or something, and just discuss it with the council members at the time first before issuing it. I'm certainly not going to put myself out there on something that's going to be a permanent long-term thing. If it's a church that's just having four revivals, you know, a year, you know, once a quarter or something, and they're outdoor, having music, you know, I'd issue it for a year and then make them come back the next year and do another one. I'm not going to give them a blanket to have them all the time. So, you know, we're certainly going to put certain specific provisions in that's going to safeguard the impact it could have, especially on neighboring properties. If it's going to be right down in the middle of a, an area that's got two dwellings per acre, we're certainly going to look at those a little harder than an amphitheater out maybe in the rural area of the county, so.
Is there any requirement for police officer or security? I didn't read one in that that would state, let's say somebody's going to draw a hundred people to a specific area. Would there be a requirement of a certain amount that they would have to pay to have security or our police officers? Because what's happening is, is during events like this, we've been very blessed, we haven't had, you know, crazy events, but there's extra two or three people that, you know, put on staff. Now, if it's a city event, it's very easy, they use their people, but from a county event, we have always had two or three extra people staffed in the area strictly for the excess amount of traffic that we have. Is there any kind of...
I don't think there's a requirement in here, but I think that's some of the decision points that I would have to use in order to make that decision. If somebody's going to have a hundred people, I've seen family reunions with a hundred people. Now, those are usually the worst, they get out most controlled fights and stuff. If they got a hundred people, I would probably just notify the sheriff, hey, we've got something going on, they're going to have a hundred people or so, you may just want to ride by and keep an eye on it. Now, if they're going to have three thousand people there, then I'll probably withhold their permit until I speak with the sheriff. Let's go over and look at security concerns that they may have, similar to the festival that they had in the southern end of the county, gratify, whatever it's called. We want to make sure the sheriff's fully involved in those type of events before the permit's actually approved, because if he comes back and says, look, we've heard of these particular groups in other areas, they have a lot of problems, I don't think you ought to give him the permit. I'm probably going to, you know, listen to him and take his opinion into consideration before it's actually issued, because if it's going to be a problem, we definitely don't want to approve that permit. So I would assume, again, fifty to a hundred people, no, three to four thousand, five hundred, six hundred, I'm going to call the sheriff before I do anything.
But even with it being on private property, they could still have the event as long as it doesn't violate the noise ordinance.
They don't have to have the permit to have the event.
And that's what I wanted to kind of, you know, go on here, that if you're going to have an event, there needs to be some kind, especially of that size. I mean, there, again, there's not, it would just be nice to look at this to say, hey, we're trying to work with you, we're glad for you to have an event that adds to our community, and it's just one of those things that, you know, costs us a lot of money and a lot of headache if we don't plan for it, so.
I'll sit, sorry.
You're the chair, please.
That's okay.
I was just going to say, if, you know, to your point, Mr. Davis, if it was, if we reached a certain threshold of expected number of tickets to be sold, maybe we, you know, if it's two hundred or three hundred people attendees, maybe we start saying, and one dollar for per ticket sold over that, because I know the sheriff has voiced in the past concerns, that it's really been a strain on his resources when that festival took place down in the south end of the county. And that costs us and him real money, and it's something that we need to pay attention to and put the burden on the folks who are costing us the money. So I know that this ordinance doesn't directly address that, but I think it's something we need to consider.
I had a question regarding the measurement site, because the way I read it, you're measuring from the site of where the complaint originated. So if someone is in violation of the noise ordinance but their next-door neighbor isn't complaining, are they not in violation of the noise ordinance? That's kind of how I read it.
They are. The sheriff's office can be essentially the complainant in that case, and they can meter it on their own, and if it exceeds the meter levels, then they can issue the citation. So there doesn't have to be a complainant outside of a deputy. So now, if it is a noise that they're not going to measure, then they do have to have a complainant aside from the deputy. So without a deputy, you can cite if you have the measurement exceeded. If you don't have the measurement exceeded, then you need a complainant, a citizen complaint.
And my last question, and this is directly at you gentlemen, as this county grows, we have a little clause in there which I've labeled the who was there first clause. Do we really want that in there as the county grows? Are we going to go back and see who was there first as to whether noise will be permitted or not?
Question.
It was a question for my neighbors here.
And I believe Ms. Kamik speaking to Section twelve thirty-five, Paragraphs ten and eleven, which are kind of, I mean, it's, I guess analogous to the Reich farm, all in a certain extent, folks who are there first and are making a noise, and then somebody else comes in and complains, they're still going to be exempt from application of this article.
So don't be so loud.
Go ahead.
We put it in for the people that want to, specifically Mr. Hart and I, you build a fence, you move in, you got a chicken farm next door, or agricultural operation, or whatever, manufacturing, and you complain...
But that's not what this addresses, because industry is already exempt, and so is ag. So that's not what this addresses. So I'm not really sure who this refers to, because we do have a list of exemptions, and industry and ag activities are exempt or have room for exemption. So when I read that, you know, I'm not quite sure who that, who we're referring to there.
I can't say that I know either. This is a carryover from prior ordinance and through committee, wanted to put back in this safeguard for any kind of entity or operation that's not otherwise exempted. You pointed out agriculture, industrial operations are exempt, so it'd be something else. On what that else is, I don't know, but if it's there, Paragraphs ten and eleven, if it's there and it's existed before somebody moves in and complains about it, it's still going to have protection under this article, so the best I can do for that.
Read the first line to me again.
"Any lawful business operating as of the date of this article that is not in compliance with this article and does not fall under exceptions set out in this article shall have six months from the date of the ordinance from which this article derives to come into compliance." That gives us six months. Eleven is the part where it's your main one. "Any lawful business or activity operating as of the date of this article that is not in compliance does not fall into an exception set out in this article will nevertheless be considered to be in compliance with this article if such lawful business or activity has existed or occurred on or at its present location and made a noise that is not in compliance with this article prior to the complaining party moving to the area affected by the noise."
That would be a lot of rifle range. Would that fall into that? Something like that, I think, would fall, even though that still falls into the agriculture, but I don't see an issue. It's just kind of, to me, this was already happening, something we may not be aware of, but, I mean, it would be, I mean, we don't have, you know, race car tracks or dirt tracks anymore, so, you know, I think it's just further, I think it's just further protection for the things that you're talking about on the agricultural side of things, that this was already something that was going on.
I think...
I'm okay with that.
Paragraph ten is fine. That basically gives them a six-month safe harbor to come into compliance, but eleven, I mean, to your point, that's what it looks like is a rifle range or something like that that we, is not specifically accepted.
And there is several rifle ranges that are not operated through, I can't even think, but it's private rifle ranges that I think would fall under that guideline there, and there's four or five in existence in the county. So I think that would apply to that, since that's already going on, it's not going to cease and desist that because it's something that has continually gone on prior to this.
I think that's fair, and like I said, I couldn't guess what all kind of activities might have, this might apply to. I know it's been in there since the previous noise ordinance was in place, and so it's certainly a question, if you want to, if you want to table this or have first reading, then I'll bring back the information next time to see if it's ever been invoked by anybody under the prior or the now existing...
Well, this is a second reading, but if you don't mind...
Second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you don't mind getting that information, I still hemming and hawing over that paragraph.
I will, yes ma'am.
Go ahead.
I'm good.
Anybody else?
That was just, just an observation, that some people would complain if it's raining old dust.
Well, yes, Wayne, I know. I know. Okay. All right, so...
You had a motion to approve and a second.
And a second.
Yep. So you're good.
Okay. Any other comments, or are we good for the moment?
We're good.
Okay. Okay, well, all in favor then?
Aye.
First reading, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash ten, an ordinance to amend Chapter six, Article three of the Code of Ordinances of Oconee County pertaining to the Oconee County Board of Building Code Appeals and other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
I think Mr. Markovich brought up a very good case on where we're headed to on people that would have, you know, residential builders and general contractors, you know, general contractors are going to be pulling from, you know, small group licensed and builders are going to be pulling from a large group, and it is difficult to already find people to fill these, as you see with my building code seat open that I have on there. So I do want to put that into consideration, that we truly look at qualifications, and I think this is a good measure moving forward, and I do appreciate that statement on there, and it's something that I definitely want to consider moving forward as I am in favor of this.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think Mr. Markovich, I echo Mr. Davis's comments. I think he came up with, brought up an excellent point there, and I think it's four contractors is, and I'm trying to find that in my backup material here, yeah, there it is, four licensed contractors. Maybe we could say one general contractor, one home builder, licensed home builder, and then two who are licensed, either licensed in a trade such as an electrician or carpenter or a general contractor or a home builder.
Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, so under general contractors, heating and air conditioning mechanical contractors come under the general contracting provisions of licensure. Electricians, now this is, these are mechanical contractors, plumbers, and electricians that are working on projects that are over five thousand dollars. Now, they are separate, and, well, they're not necessarily separate, but there is a distinction between them and the mechanical contractors that work on residential projects because they're not generally licensed, they are just required to have a registration, and they actually operate under the builder's license. So you could end up having, like if, with the contractors, you could end up getting a mechanical contractor who's H E V A C of plumbing or electric, or you could have, you know, but I just wanted to make sure that we're looking at a broad distinction there. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, and for Mr. Markovich to stand perhaps, the way I was thinking about this was because we have some difficulty filling these seats, is broadening this net really to just say for persons who are either licensed contractors or residential builders, that way the council has its discretion. If you don't have a mechanical engineer out there, then you don't, but if you do have one, then you can put them on, it falls within that larger umbrella, and I think that that captures where we're going. So that would be a first, if y'all are inclined, that would be a first recommended amendment.
And my fear would be if you had a general contractor, you know, and you've got a appeal, the chances that he's going to know who that appeal is is going to be large now. I mean, if we're going to get, you know, have to stain, like we've talked about a little bit on, if you have, is it just a bill, the building that you're building in question, or is it a contractor that you regularly contract with that's in question? That's one of the things that we have to look at as well. Mr. McCall brought that up on how we go forward with this, because if you're, a general contractor has sixteen to thirty different guys licensed under him working, so, you know, that's a call that, you know, I guess we have to make or they have to make, I don't know.
Okay, Madam Chair, anytime recusal for you all, for whomever, for these folks on this board, that's the decision that they have to make. If their relationship would influence their decision, then they have to recuse themselves. And in committee, Mr. McCall asked, and we put it in as Section two K, that any failure of a member to recuse himself due to a conflict of interest is grounds for immediate removal by council to help safeguard some... by council to help safeguard some more against that possibility.
You okay with that?
Yeah, 'cause we worry about, we've been, Mr. Muller and I and Mr. Hart have been going over a whole bunch of favoritism this week, so.
So, it would be council's discretion if that was or wasn't favoritism? Is that kind of what you're-
Well, if people come up, people come and says, hey, he's got a hand, he's got a stake in this thing, and he voted one way or the other. Well, then you've, he's already crossed the line.
So, it's our discretion to determine if he crossed the line? That's what you're saying?
We appointed him on there, so we have the right to remove.
Right. Remove him, but the decision stays? Is that what?
No, you just remove him, his vote's tainted now. If he voted, and he's, his hands are already dirty, well, then he's finished.
That, Mr. McCall's correct. So, if they failed to recuse themselves, that decision is there.
Okay.
Then it'd be your decision whether or not to, that failure to recuse is basis for an immediate dismissal of that person from the board. It would certainly also be a grounds for the appellant to have the decision overturned if they felt that there's a failure from, say, somebody to recuse themselves. So, that ball does fall in the appellant's court.
I just don't wanna get in, obviously, I guess if it gets approved, it's usually not the issue, it's the ones that get declined is the ones that I feel like we're gonna start seeing, and I haven't served on here long enough. Have you, I guess, under the other ordinance that you had, that didn't come back to the council if there was a denial? We will, 'cause realistically, it seems to me, that's the only time you're gonna have somebody really upset at this, is-
Denial won't come back to council. The denial, by law, goes to an appellate court process. The only thing that'll come back to you is whether or not you wanna keep that representative on the board or not. And that's what I think the point Mr. Root was making, is where you'll run into an issue is if an individual voted against the appeal, then the person who was appealing the decision could say, well, they denied my appeal only because this person had a conflict, take that to the appellate court, and use that as an argument at the appellate court level.
You're correct.
But the decision would stay, and that-
Okay, that's what I was getting at. So-
The decision would go elsewhere. The only thing you guys would hear is whether or not you wanna keep that person on the board or not.
Okay. That's what I wanna clear it up, because that's what I was getting confused about, 'cause it's like, if we're trying to change the decision that's made, because, okay, I got you. I'm good.
You're the person.
Okay.
Decision goes.
So, do we need to amend the ordinance to-
Reflect the language.
Yeah, and if we could, since we're at it, I think we could do two amendments at the same time. The other one that Mr. Markovich spoke of is one that just really needs to be done. So, the First Amendment would be for two B, as well as two F, which speaks to licensed contractors, to state four persons who are either licensed contractors or residential builders. Then, the Second Amendment goes to, again, within two B, it says that Oconee County Fire Chief shall serve as a non-voting ex officio member. The fire chief, we can have there as needed if there's an issue related to him, but I don't know that he needs to or wants to be there for every meeting. But as Mr. Markovich pointed out, for issues under the International Residential Code, not the building code, but the I R C, the building official's supposed to be an ex officio member. So, we would just, for the Second Amendment, we would delete the sentence that says, "Oconee County Fire Chief shall serve as a non-voting ex officio member," and insert, "For matters arising under the International Residential Code, the building official shall serve as a non-voting ex officio member." That's just code compliance.
I'd like to amend my original motion to put the language that we discussed, that I won't attempt to add that in there, for that. So, motion to amend my original amendment to hold the-
As stated.
As stated.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you need a motion, a vote now on the amended motion.
As amended.
Okay.
Okay. We don't need another motion, though, right? So, the vote is to approve this ordinance as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty seventeen dash eleven, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight of the Oconee County Court of Ordnances in certain limited regards and particulars only regarding the control free district and other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Root. What it, does this pertain to just agriculture zoning? Does it pertain, what else does it pertain to?
Everything. It's across the board, any type of, anything that's been, say, rezoned to any particular district couldn't go back to control free. If this passes through three readings, then it could. So, regardless of the district, ag, ag rez, whatever it may be, could go back to control free.
Lake rez, lake residential.
Every one of them.
Everything.
And I would add, maybe we should just make the motion this way, that it does have to go back to planning commission after y'all's vote, if it's in the affirmative for them to review and make a report. So, y'all can do that after you pass this, if you pass it, or as part of the motion.
How long has the Z E L been in existence?
That's an eight, ten.
I'm sorry?
Nine years.
Two thousand eight, I think, was the approval date, sometime around August.
If it were only in existence in the last few months, I'd say, fine. But we're gonna be spinning the county upside down if we approve this at this late of a date, and it affects such a broad range of issues. I cannot support this.
I have to agree with Ms. Kamik.
Madam Chair, I'd like to call for a vote.
Before you do that.
I'm sorry. Just, we'd have to have discussion, and if you wanna call a question, then you have to have four of y'all agree to end debate and call the question.
Okay.
That's okay, we can discuss this. We can discuss.
This was, this was brought out as a result, when I was on, first got on council, none of y'all were here, with the land grab, and they were ramming it down. They said, oh, it's citizen initiated rubbish. They were ramming it down the throats left and right. People up there saying, this is wrong, this is wrong. We got the votes, and we're gonna drag you into them. I remember these old maps we'd hold up. All this is yellow around here, all these people want this, but this is area here, we're gonna suck this one in. He don't want it, but we're gonna bring him in. The point of this is, is their land, they pay the taxes on it. I'm gonna give you an example. One son of a gun come down the street, walk in our corporate office, we don't like what you're doing there. Said, well, it's for sale, and you wanna buy it? No, we don't wanna buy it. He said, we'll sell it right now. Goes, well, you know, we look at, we look at, we look at, buy shipyard somewhere else anyway. We ain't got no shit up here. Wants you buy it? Well, we ain't got no money. Well, then why you wanna control it? Well, where do you live? I live three miles down the road from you. That's what we're trying to do. It's your land, you pay the taxes, you oughta be able to do what you want to your land. If you don't like what the person's doing on their land, go down the street, offer them some money. You jack the price up high enough, I feel quite sure they'd sell, but don't say that your little quarter acre, or whatever, half acre, or whatever you got, you're gonna control everything else in the county by running up and down and saying, well, this is hurting my property values. Well, you ain't nowhere near the place it's there, but we don't like it. You don't pay, if you don't like the way that people do in their land, pay the taxes on it, buy it. If you don't, if you don't like it, if you don't wanna buy it, then be quiet. It's their land, they pay the taxes. They bought it, you could've bought it, they bought it first. Or maybe you didn't wanna buy it. Thank you.
I don't disagree with you, Wayne. However, this tug of war has been going on for so long between the pro and anti-zoning individuals, and in the years that have passed, there have been an influx into Oconee County of plenty of people who don't even understand this tug of war. And, you know, they also made decisions to buy certain properties based on what was around them. And actually, they're the ones I'm concerned about, because unknowingly now, things might change, and now we're gonna have even a worse problem. So, I, you know, I can see both sides, but I think this is gonna cause more problems than anything else. I think if there's a particular individual that has a beef with us or an issue, I would like to hear from them individually. But to pass a blanket ordinance, changing all this at this late of a date, I think is detrimental.
Madam Chair, if I may, one of the things I was just confused, so, Wayne, you feel like people should be able to do whatever they want to on their land?
Well, they supposedly, Julian, went into this voluntarily, but we all know that they didn't go, well, a lot of cases, it didn't go into it voluntarily. If you go back on the old council records and look at the old maps, they did not, and this is just a meager attempt. It ain't gonna solve it. It ain't gonna solve it by a long shot. Don't get me wrong, this is not the cure-all. It's a meager attempt at letting some people say, I got drug into this thing back in the old days, and I would like to do something else. Now, if it goes back to planning commission, and the planning commission says, look, yeah, you know, you're off your rocker, you want to do something really outrageous, then they don't, they have to be, there has to be some meager ground of reasoning here. That's all this is aimed at, this is what I'm after. It's not gonna cure anything. It's not gonna settle the argument one little bit.
So, there would still be controls of people's land, just different controls? Is that, because they can't do, I'm confused.
Well, they, they got drug in, like I said, if you go back and look at the old maps, where the yellow map was and the white.
Right.
And they, there were a lot of people that were really wrong, were drug in, were drug into it.
So, you're still talking about controlling what they can do with the land, but in a different manner than what they're zoned right now? So, we're-
We're letting them go, if they wanna go back to something else lesser, right now you can only ratchet up the ladder, you can't go back down the ladder.
Okay. Well, that, what I was worried about is you're like, they can do whatever they want to with their land, whenever they wanna do it, and that, but now we're talking about within reasoning of-
Within reason, yeah.
Okay, okay.
You can't, you can't.
I just wanted to-
'Cause if you go, well, you do whatever you want to, well, then, you know, some-
So, there is, there would be some type of ordinance or zoning for that person's property, just not what they're currently zoned right now?
What I'm saying is, let's let them go back, if they want less, let them go back down the ladder. Right now, they can only go up the ladder.
Okay.
And this is, and like I said, this ain't gonna fix the problem by a long shot. We're still gonna, it's like Edna said, we're still gonna have deep-rooted arguments back and forth and back and forth. As a council, we're not gonna settle this. We're kidding, I says, if we think we are.
Okay.
Any other comments? Would you like to say something?
No.
Paul?
I recognize both sides. I mean, it's obviously a very important issue in this country, but if you go back and look at who originally had the land, it wasn't us either. It wasn't this country, it was some Native Americans. And that land was taken from them, and it was, they were told what they could do and could not do with their land. And so, if we want to sit here and pretend like that's not part of our history, we're only fooling ourselves. And I believe that a person's rights to do what they want with their land ends at the moment they begin harming another. And that is what we're trying to deal with here, is that those people who have relied on property being used for a certain use, and purchased neighboring property in reliance on that use, or expected use by their neighbor, this, to roll that back could seriously and negatively affect property values in this county. And that is why I am opposed to rolling things back to control free. If people seek to be rezoned, they're welcome to petition, but I do not believe that we need to roll it back to essentially an unzoned or control-free position. And those are my comments.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Read it to. Against. Ordinance twenty seventeen dash twelve, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a, oh, wait a minute, we amended the agenda for that. So, we'll skip that for the moment. First and final reading of the following resolution, twenty seventeen dash zero five, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the South Carolina Statewide Mutual Aid Agreement for Emergency and Disaster Response Recovery.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No action items. Building codes appeal board, we're amending that ordinance, but also, I just wanted to make note of the fact that I had reviewed all the applications we have on file. So, we really, at this point in time, don't even have an applicant.
You're correct.
Okay. So, we'll skip that. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
Madam Chair, if I may, we talked a little bit in the budget meeting about moving forward with a recreation committee, and you asked if I would be interested in head that up, and I just wanted to state that I did accept that. And moving forward, we will be creating more, talking about recreation in Oconee County moving forward, so we can have a design plan. So, I did feel the need to bring that up under new business, so we can move forward with that.
So, this committee, how is that gonna be put together?
That will, I guess, I'll need to discuss that with Mr. Root to design what that committee would be, but it would entail the entities that currently do recreation in our, in Oconee County. It would involve individuals that are already entailed in there with a council representative on there. So, I guess by the next meeting, we could have more information on how we will make up that.
Yeah, we'll talk, we can do it as an ad hoc committee, we can do it a number of different ways.
Okay.
To make it flexible, with the sunset provision or layout.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be as formal as some of our other programs.
Right. That's what I was thinking, too.
Yes.
I have one more thing, so I'm tuned lines. How we coming on the upper end of the lake, what Mr. Tereski talked about? 'Cause I think, we could get that part, we opened that road up on that point, that's already paved, already out there, get a whole lot more parking spaces, 'cause right now, the big thing, if you, you can't get the park, is to park down by the bridge, down by Duke Power. That was plugged up with Greeble County sheriff deputies today.
Well, we're obviously getting nowhere with that park. We're gonna continue with the safety provisions that we employed last year, and working with Duke Energy, and a lot of the things that council discussed, to hopefully have another successful season. But in order to take that park over, you're gonna have to give me some money to operate it. We're gonna need rangers, we're gonna need site improvements, additional parking, I can't do it without the money. Council in the past has not in any way directed me to take that park on. Every time we reviewed it, council said no.
Can we talk to Duke Power about locking that other gate to give us more parking?
I could certainly request and see if they'd be willing to do that, but, you know, like I said, at this point, we're gonna continue with the same direction we received last year, the same safety provisions that we employed in order to hopefully keep the crowd control down.
Well, you know, it's always good to know people wanna go to the lake, you know, it's beats sitting at home, fiddling with their computers.
Absolutely. We welcome them out and just get there early, 'cause it fills up quick. We welcome them out and just get there early because it fills up quick.
It's not, it's not a private lake, you know, it's for the, their permit says when they built the lake, it's primary for generate, for to cool the reactors, but also is, was a big division for recreation and open access. And I like to see it, you know...
Yeah, Fall Creek was one of those open access areas, but unfortunately, due to safety concerns, we now have to, you know, restrict the access to it based on...
And inundated with idiots, people that want to tear things up and do that. It's just a shame.
Well, you know, we have a, you know, a conceptual idea of what that place could look like if it was a county park, so I'm not saying that it's a, you know, not a good idea. It's a wonderful idea. Obviously, it's going to take money.
It just takes money.
Yeah, and, you know, the point actually would be a great, you know, to start with primitive campsite for tents and things like that on that point, as we start generating activity and money, we go in and start improving some of them, maybe put a cabin or two out there. I mean, there's, there's ideas that have already been presented and rolled around about how that park could be adapted into a county park for public access and a revenue generation device very similar to what South Cove is for us right now, so...
If you go back, Scott, and look at when Bill Lee was President of Duke Power, Vice President, when he built Oconee Nuclear Station, he was big into public access. He had planned all sorts of stuff, and that was, that up there was, was a result of getting more access to the, before they even developed around the lake. So, the plan, Duke's got the plans, and that's where that paved road that goes out on that...
Across the day of the point?
Yeah. That, all that was paved, and then they put the gate up after, after, after the point.
Yep.
So, the paved roads and the, I think it was going to be campsites out down that point.
There was.
So, it's not like we're going to have to spend money on planning. They already did that for us.
Yeah, I think that idea's it, and how we just got to move on and take it over, start putting money aside to develop it. Anyhow, we're more than willing to take your direction.
Tell Alan Boggs you want the key to the gate.
Trees is tough out there. I got to clear trees and which will have to present a plan to Duke to get approval to do all that.
Just get the key for the gate. Tell Alan you want the key.
Does Duke Energy work on the weekend? Maybe we can get some stuff done on the weekend.
They have us work on weekends on the weekend, but I don't know about getting, getting the key for them.
Okay, council committee reports. Technically, we should have had our budget committee report today, but I'm going to lump it with next week's budget committee for the next meeting instead of reporting and reporting some more. So, we'll have it on, at the next council meeting. So, that being the case, I need a motion to recess for executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning contractual negotiations in relation to the lease of certain county-owned property located on Sandofer Boulevard, consisting of approximately 58 acres to the Foothills Agricultural Resource and Marketing Center.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session? We do need to go back and do the... What do we need to do?
Ordinance.
Ordinance 2017-12, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a ground lease agreement between Oconee County and the Foothills Agricultural Resource and Marketing Center.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.